The witching hour is upon us, folks. My watch says 7:00 PM. Kay, would you do the honor? All right, it is December 12th, 2024, 7:00 PM. Meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Carbondale, Colorado. Kay, would you please take role?
Anne Crimmer, here. Candace Hart, here. Sia. Cindy Suplesio, here. Kim McGee, here. Nick Mision, absent. Jeff Dablin is absent. Jared Moore, here. Nicholas DeFrank.
Present.
Thank you, Kay. Consent agenda from November 14th. Any Commissioner comments? Is it me or are the speakers really loud this evening? Or is it my voice is annoying me? I'm loud naturally, but I'm trying to be quiet.
No comments, once again, thank you, Kay.
Yeah.
All good? Then I will accept a motion.
Move to approve the minutes?
First to Jared. Second to Cindy. All right. Thank you much. Okay, do we have any folks online tonight besides Kyle? All right, with that, I see no one in the audience, so. But now as one for public comment. Going to move right on past that and get things going. Action item number one, public hearing. 1431 and 1461 Main Street Buildings. FNG Design Modifications Administrative Plan. Jared, you want to bring us in?
Yeah, I'll try doing this by memory. My computer decides it's just not gonna stay on, so.
So it's government issue products.
Right. So when the applicant submitted a building permit, staff reviewed plans for compliance with the site plan. During that review, we found a number of changes that were made. And worked with the applicant to kind of understand what those were. Some of them are related to the building roof form, others building height. Some are design elements. Location of windows, repetitiveness of windows, doors, materials, things like that. And kind of the comprehensive nature of all of these changes were enough to warrant kind of another look at it by the Planning and Zoning Commission to make sure that it's in line with the original approval. And so what was presented in the packet for you guys tonight is kind of a side-by-side comparison of what was approved elevation-wise, floor plan-wise, and then what was proposed in the in the or what was presented in the building permit submission. I would like to note in the staff report, I also put in there that part of the process for development at this site is that the applicant and staff have a pre-application meeting for building permits. The applicant did request that of staff, but due to some of the turnover with Janet and John leaving and myself coming on, that never occurred. And so we didn't have this opportunity kind of before they submitted the full plans to go through some of these design changes. What we're asking for you guys to review tonight is an administrative site plan review. So if you are comfortable with the changes, we've included a motion of approval. If you guys have concerns about some of the modifications, we'd recommend giving feedback to the applicant that they could potentially make some changes, come back to you guys with design changes, and I recommend you guys continue this. It is a notice public hearing, so they did meet all noticing requirements. I believe that is about it. Happy answering your questions you all might have. Otherwise, I'd really leave it over to the applicant to kind of explain the design and design modifications.
Great, thanks, Jared. It is as kind of a side note on this for new folks and because we've been around this that long. This was a requests like this were made in response to, we'll say, a project in Carbondale years ago where a set of elevations and plans were provided. What was built did not adhere to those to a level that was concerning to a past version of the planning commission. So with because of that, we just have been we requested that Jared and his staff were more stringent on changes. And when they reached a kind of a notable level that it would come up to this commission for review. So just a little bit of background there. And and to the applicant, thank you for showing up tonight to talk the changes through to us. So with that, firstly, any questions by the commission for Jared? Procedural or otherwise? I had one comment here. I noticed that Candace, you are on the kind of proximity list.
Yes, so I had emailed, sorry, I had emailed Jared. I live at 1460 Main Street and I actually have an office at 1430, 1370, sorry. And Jared said, I'm not, I'm across the street. So to divulge that that's where I live and work, but apparently it's no conflict.
Great, yeah, and typically, I know you're new, so just divulge that and just if you feel that you can be part of this without a bias or a concern, given your relationship to the project, just let us know.
Yeah, I feel neutral enough, it's across the street. I saw all the plans before I bought my condo, so. And I have more design questions, so just wait for after the applicant, right?
Fantastic, great, thank you. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to the applicants. If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourselves and the project and give us a little bit of an intro to what we are going to be looking at tonight.
Hi, I'm Andy Wisniewski with Post Architecture and one of the partners in the project.
I'm Kyle McGalton, Post Architect.
I appreciate Jared's kind of information. I think I just wanted to add maybe a smaller, smaller piece to that. When our team had, you know, began the design process, obviously, working with our ownership and in going through the process of getting the original approval, as many know, many who've been around town know the storied history of the marketplace and all the efforts that had gone into trying to get that approval in place. We came away with what was a very schematic level kind of design and in support of kind of the way the process worked works and worked at the time. You know, the 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 package was sufficient enough to convey the design intent that we we had hoped to portray to the town and was well received at the time and got unanimous approval. And we 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 came away with a sense that we we had the spirit of the place sort of captured in that as what was demonstrated in the first three buildings next to the city market. There were attempts by ownership and the design team as we were developing it to continue to refine the design with the with the thoughts that we can we can improve some things about the buildings that were originally approved. And so in working with the planning staff at that time, they, primarily being Janet Buck at the time, she agreed that these changes made sense and we we proceeded to enact those without much difficulty. And so as we develop this particular building, at the early stages of our design process and working with ownership on several things that we thought were design refinements that helped the building. One mainly is at the time when we did the original approval, we had basically a building that was a long linear front face to the building and it had no no movement to the to the facade. So in discussions, we 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 thought that a subtle improvement would to help make it feel still feel a bit more like these buildings grew over time. We decided to stagger the the front face by a small amount, I think two feet at the most, through the length of the building and to give it a little more of an assing grace. And then several other things had to develop through the process as well. We we knew from the first phase, first phases that the extra ceiling heights within the the units were well received. The the tenants that live in those buildings appreciated when we did that and recognized from the time when we initially proposed that the the lower ceiling heights, which were around eight foot in the in the in those structures, we we decided to increase the head height in those those floors to nine, maybe nine and a half feet, something in that range, just to to give them a little more quality of interior space. And and so subsequently, like I said, several other elements that we we identified over the design process. But before we went to the process of documenting this, fully documenting the design for permit, we had approached the the town about these design changes and as a pre-app, as as Jared mentioned. And at the time, it was about, I think Janet had left the the planning department and and it was John, John's responsibility from at least from what we heard, there were two Johns at that time, but they they were sort of kind of relegated to any kind of planning discussions. And they they appeared to be okay with what was being presented as not significant enough. And there wasn't really, from their perspective, a need to go through a pre-application process. And admittedly, I know that they were probably very busy at the time with all the things that were going on. And then subsequently, those those two had decided to to leave too. So, you know, having gotten that kind of reception, we we went ahead with fully documenting this. The owner went ahead and invested on development of the documents. And I think two months later, we submitted for a building permit with the town. The town accepted the building permit. And as as you know, it it came several months later that we we have Jared now, who through his process, reviewed the documents and recognized these changes and felt it was significant from his his point of view that we reviewed these. But I kind of, I just wanted everyone to have a more better sense of how we got to this point, knowing that we kind of invested in these these additional changes. But I think we can kind of go through the the documents now. Kyle, if you don't mind bringing them.
The specific changes. So we have a list here split up per building. And this numbered list corresponds with these elevations here, which is a comparison between our proposed design and our newest design, or sorry, our approved design and our current proposal. One of the more significant changes was changing the slope of the roof from quarter inch pitch to 112. And it slopes in one direction from front to back, whereas previously we had interior roof drains.
That that change was made due in part to the addition of solar panels. So we were utilizing that kind of configuration to help that, facilitate the the better orientation. And it was also somewhat of a constructibility issue. This was kind of a parapetted original design. And the developers felt like they they felt it would be a little less problematic to have somewhat of a sloping roof. Even though it being subtle, it was just an easier way to to deal with water and.
And the main street facade retains its parapet. You would only see the low slope from the back side or the interior block. That was number one. We also added the photovoltaic panels to the roofs. That was a requirement. Moving to the list, we eliminated, there's a small little structure at the rear entry. The over this red door here and the green doors here has been eliminated.
From that, we were feeling like it might be just a little simpler design, a little more like a brick facade to to just kind of keep that a little simpler than what we had originally proposed.
You'll find a few different changes to the layouts of the windows. And most of that is responding to our furniture plans on the inside of the building. So as we developed the project, we developed the interior spaces and we want the windows and doors respond to what's happening inside. So you'll see, for example, some sill heights have gotten higher where there's now kitchen countertops or maybe a couch. So you'll see some difference with the window layout.
We also added some to the side of the building to just improve the livability of those particular units.
Then we'll find some design changes to materials and, for example, this wing's got detail. It used to come up three feet and that's been lowered.
I didn't notice a a materials cut sheet of any sort with this drawing package. Is that something that's going to be available or be reviewable? I I think something that was also notable was between the original submittal elevations and the updates. Just a general variation between the two. So I appreciate that there was kind of a red outline denoting changes. But in general, the graphics have changed enough to, I guess, leave into question, have materials changed across the board? What are the materials? What is the color package? How much variation are we talking about here?
I think our general intent was to keep relatively similar to what was originally proposed in terms of the brick. And, you know, the variety of colors were. And again, I think to some degree, these these packages might not necess, it's always a little bit interesting when we we do these things in the computer that they don't always convey the actual design of the the brick or the color of the brick. And so I think there's a little bit of that going on as well.
I I apologize, I didn't include it. The plan set does have a material kind of legend and the building plans do have more detail on that, but I failed to capture that in the
Got it.
plans that we sent you guys, so apologies.
Thanks, Jared. Thanks for nothing, I mean. Okay, well, that that helps understand a little bit. And I'm sure you can, you know, with designer eyes, you can probably easily see the old ones have a bit of luster, have a different kind of shading and a different kind of, we'll say, volume to them. Whereas the new graphics come across a lot flatter, doesn't really do justice to your, I think, argument right now. So try and understand that.
I think the original proposal had had a little more, yes, shade and shadow and things like that than these more production rabbit drawings did really capture, and I apologize for that.
No need to apologize, just just wanted to make sure that we were that my eyes weren't going crazy, which they they can from time to time. But sorry to sorry to get in your way there.
No, thank you.
Please go on.
So one significant change with the massing here is from this east side. This was due to a change with the floor plans. So a bedroom was moved from the second level to the third level to improve the those two levels. And so you'll see at the back, backside of building F here, we've had to add to that massing right here, it steps down. That's just due to the interior floor plan changes. Over on this view, we'll notice some of the fences have changed designs, so they've gotten slightly taller to improve privacy for the residents. You also noticed our shed back here, the pitch of the roof has changed direction 90 degrees. If I go to the plan. So on our approved, our initial proof set, the shed roof sloped towards this fence line between the properties. That was a bit problematic for maintenance and water drainage. So we decided to rotate that and now all the water drains down to this edge of the shed. The owner will have access to. And you'll also notice the stepping is a little bit more prominent now from the side views due to the buildings going in and out. And we did eliminate this fence at the front yard across both buildings. Discuss the parapet heights. Maintain our nice ceilings. A lot of this is repetitive because it happens in several units in both buildings. A lot of this is just like the changing of trim color and dimensional changes to trim. And go to the plan now so we can see how we did some changes to the stepping of the building. You'll see here, we have a two-foot step at these two units and the two end units to break up that facade and reinforce the concept that this project was developed over over time. That was actually most of the changes.
There was one, other one under the rear porch.
Have we talked, covered?
Did you?
Yeah, I think.
I think it was the first one you mentioned, yeah. Thank you for confirming.
Just scroll through here to make sure I didn't miss anything. For example, these doors have changed color.
Conversation about the owner preferring a different color than the not.
Widerizing.
To to you, you guys were good until that point. That was just the straw that broke the back, I'm sorry.
And a lot of the changes to G are exactly the same as F since they're very similar buildings.
And I'm sorry, Kyle, would you mind going to the actual site plan? Just to give the commission a kind of an understanding. I'd meant to ask that in the beginning for the macro thinkers in the room. It is kind of.
At the southwest corner of Lot 1 is FNG here.
And so just again, for confirmations, everything along the north end is complete. The footsaw court is a floating example of completion out there right now. And then these buildings will come in next. Either Jared or the applicant, can you kind of, can you walk us through kind of next steps, you know, what to expect before we get into any of the kind of the commissioner questions on the buildings and the changes?
Well, as you know, obviously, everything along the city market side has has been completed. The two along shorty paths here are re have been restarted and those are actually being constructed as we speak. The steel buildings, as we call them, which are here along this southerly portion of the park, are intended to start construction as well. I believe those are have the permitting has been held up only due to some of the commitments on some of these other processes being completed. And possibly Jared might want to comment a little more about that. But the owner would like to get those going as soon as possible, as soon as we can get through the conversation on what it will take to get those those through the permit with an intention, assuming we can come to some resolution on these townhomes along Main Street, that they would probably start those in the first quarter of next year, get those going as well. And then subsequently, we have not started the completion of many of the documents along the other corner and build the side buildings. And it's kind of partly another thing that I wanted to kind of test the waters on as we move beyond to the next round to avoid having to come back every time we want to propose something. Is is there, you know, an avenue or a receptiveness to the idea that we still have a little bit of latitude to stay, as long as we stay within a general framework of things, that we have some ability to adjust things here or there as we see that we'll see them as improvements in the design to go forward? Maybe another question too, that I thought might be worth hearing about was that there continues to be a concern that the the commercial side of development these days is still very slow. It is a fear that we're finding that that there is as much of a need for the commercial space as we're seeing from the residential side and whether there's any possibility the development team could could propose an alternative maybe for residential in some of those those lower level commercial spaces, even to the point where, you know, that might be restricted housing as an alternative use. Just because, like I said, commercial is just very difficult to define a, you know, the the type of interest that exists around them. So there may may be a a stronger use for for that particular location as as something else. But but the intention is the, from from what we've talked about, due to the fact that the interest rates are continuing to drop and and they're seeing a little bit more favorable conditions for development from that perspective, that those remaining units would follow suit in the coming months after after we've started construction on the Main Street site to follow up with design and development of of the remaining portions of of those other other buildings that we have yet completed.
Being E and D?
Yes.
Yes. Thanks for that, appreciate it. A quick answer to your first question. I I think from this commission's perspective, everything goes through Jared, you know, if it's, it depends on, you know, where, you know, he's he is our guide and thermometer on. Uh, guide and thermometer on, you know, how much change is. Too much, too little, so I think we'll just continue to defer to him as part of this process. Um, uh, and his staff. But to bring it back into the here and now on buildings, G and F. Um, anything else you want to share before we kind of? Check in with the commission here for questions.
Don't think so. I mean, unless there was questions about anything that we might have missed that we needed more clarification on. I think the the general premise is that we're through this process trying to improve upon the the final product and and ways that at the time that. When we submitted the the original, original design, we will, that weren't really common for us.
So, um, with that, I think we can, um. We'll open up public comment at this time. Are you for public comment? Okay. So with that, um, we'll move on. Jared, we feel close to a comment if we don't actually open it in the first place.
Um, because it's.
Because it's a notice public hearing, we have to open it and close it even if there are no public comments, correct?
Do you need a motion to close it?
Um, no, you can just open and close.
Okay, we've opened and we've closed. So, uh, commissioners, um, opportunity to talk amongst ourselves. Questions, comments internally before we kind of turn back to the applicant.
Talking about these, the changes.
That is correct. Yeah, so everything that was in those red boxes, good questions, Cindy, Andy in the red boxes, um, we are. Is is kind of in our our purview at this point. It is the point of this conversation.
Uh, Nick, just a quick question on, you might have more history. Are these for rent units or are these units for sale?
You know, I had a, I had a similar question, Jared, can you?
These are all rental units. The entire development is rental. There are some affordable rentals dispersed throughout the development. I believe there are some affordable rentals in. Each one of these buildings. I don't know the exact number. Um, but the overall development plan included. Price capped affordable rentals within each of the buildings.
Are are they furnished rentals?
I don't believe so.
Okay. And I had a question on, um. I'm not sure which electric utility, uh, serves those lots. Do you guys know? If it's because the Holy Cross break is like.
It's Excel, it's Excel.
It's Excel, okay.
Jared, you said there were. Plans that were were missing from review. Is that the? Uh, materials?
Yeah, wi- within the building permit plan set that they submitted, there was some additional material. Documents. Um, when I reviewed it, I didn't see anything. Different from the material side. There were some slight adjustments in the colors and those kind of show through and the renderings. Yep, that were prepared, but the the materials themselves were. Identical between the two plan sets.
Quickly, can I ask, are the names you gave us, like CR masses, are they the owners? They bought the units? What's going on? I don't. Oh, that's who you notified. Okay.
The set radius of the project. So I think in in summary, you know, if if, and please correct me here if I missed something, but changes to be noted are. Clearly some height changes, uh, perfect changes, roofline changes. Solar, uh, PV. Coming down, I think the window package, packages are probably the most notable on the facades. Uh, to to just identify that. The Wayne Scott, um, detail along the the bottom of the units changing. The removal of the kind of the the porches of the walkouts, covered walkouts in the back. Um, the front fenced areas have been removed. Changes to the rear fencing, changes to the rear. Uh, sheds and more articulation along the front and rear of the properties. Other than that, a little bit of along the front facade, a little bit notable. Changes as well to roof height, parapet height. Then interior bathrooms being relocated at the third floor. Anybody have comments or concerns or questions on any of those items?
I have a couple of questions.
Great, thanks, Candace.
Um. Uh, could be to the architecture firm, but. And I, some of it, I understand you only removed the rear cover from a few, that it wasn't on all of them. But that is one of my questions because. It's really hard to keep snow off your front door if there's no coverage, but there's no coverage on the front either, which I know is not something we can comment on. So just one of that was one, should I list all my questions or should we just go one by one?
One by one.
Okay, um, another question is why they removed the front fence? Um, and then the snow shed on their storage, it seems like it's going into the backyard instead of out. Uh, you know, where they're small yards, so that's a question. Why wouldn't you send it? Out of the backyard so that's easier to keep that, um, from piling up in someone's backyard and causing. Uh, a very full backyard of snow. And then the headers of the windows, so above the windows, seems like that's color changed. So I don't know if you can pull up the material, like, uh, proved and proposed, that would be maybe helpful. And then another question really has nothing to do with what was already approved, which is. Why there's only bike parking on one side of this whole development versus.
I think it's probably outside of our.
Yeah, okay, no problem.
To the buildings.
Yep. Though I do think the pitch, I will comment that the pitch change is great. The roof pitch changes. Because I live in one with a flatter roof and we have so many problems, so.
Yeah, that's, that's all I have.
All right, uh, let's see. The the fencing, I I think, uh, sadly, we've got the fencing, the headers, supposed to stop up the headers.
You were referring to this.
Yeah. So, yeah, you have, eh, like, uh, Nick already commented on, Nicholas already commented on. That it it really, it looks to seem that it's quite a change from a more. Uh, graphically having a pop to graphically being a lot more subtle. With that black header mostly. Um, changing to more of that brick color or the color that is on the building.
That one, I can't recall the genesis of that specifically. I don't know that. Our perspective, if it went back to something a little more on the. You know, segmented versus a linear, we've had a huge problem one way out of the road, not specifically. But can't really comment on why that change of camera. Let's see, the fencing, I I think came back to a conversation with the owners and. And the team that, you know, we just felt like maybe it would feel better along the street without having that enclosure. To make it feel a little better if it was open to the to the unit, so that's probably the the big answer on that one. See which one's next, uh. The roof shedding, uh, again, I think that it was our intention to avoid shedding internally. Between the two, in some cases, which was what was originally a proposed. And, uh, their original design, and I think the other alternative was to shed it toward the north. And felt like that might become more problematic because there is a circulation kind of zone along that side of the building that. We didn't really want snow to pile up there, so I I we just. Kind of felt like our best option was to do more control inside the yard as opposed to the outside. That's kind of how that sort of evolved.
There's the sidewalk to the north of the shed that we were trying to avoid.
Yeah, and I think it actually makes a lot of sense to bring, it's just somewhat of a good neighbor policy to not. Especially in free stall cycles, you're putting, putting that out on a public sidewalk because then. Who becomes responsible for a slip and fall? Who is, there's a liability piece there, um, although it does pile up in a small backyard. I think typically we, you know, we we think about the responsibility of. Snow melt and drainage flows being contained on a lot. So although it it does make sense, especially pitching to the south also makes sense in this case. So I guess I, I mean, yeah, I kind of follow that one.
Yeah, they're really, you know, it like. The only, you know, obvious one was that we didn't didn't want to pitch it over the door either because that's going to be a problem. And again, uh, in between was somewhat of an issue, so we just felt like that was really our best best orientation given the alternatives.
Yeah. The covered, uh, the covered rear access.
And again, I think part of was discussions with the ownership. There there was some concern that they they wanted to encourage more of the pedestrian and entry accesses. From the south side or along the main street side and less encouraging because it's going to be a shadow in that yard off the back, so. It was the thought that those porches were sort of, uh, not necessarily, uh, something that was. You know, from our perspective, something that we wanted, really wanted to encourage the use of that yard as much. Because it does impact the neighbors too across the, across the the road. If if things start to develop, and as you can kind of see, some of those spots get a little tight that period as it is. So it just opened up the space a little bit more too.
It is interesting, however, that, um, you went to a sloped roof and then took away the coverings. Um, there, you know, one could consider, you know, or. That that would result in more snow precipitation, um, falling in, you know, in that situation. Or in in that kind of that rear exit, uh, area.
But where it was directed probably wasn't much utilized piece of that area.
Anybody have any additional comments or want to kind of key in on top of Candace's comments or build on those?
Yeah, more. More along the lines of the covers. You wanted to encourage access from the south, but primarily people will be parking on the north. Isn't that right? Right, so this is the entry to people's homes. And you're taking away that visual aspect of it, or. I don't see the reason for that. What were, were the changes primarily based upon cost or design development? I don't understand that. Yeah.
I think it was really between, you know, simply buying that some level of cost concern and then thirdly. From the owner's perspective, the backyard were not something he wanted to encourage or they wanted to encourage as a. A big use, use space.
Where else are the people going to use space?
I, from their their side, they were probably hoping it'd be more from the south on on that front, front side of it.
But this happens where they lost their fences. Yeah, you gotta go to those planned, the the very last ones.
Did you have a good setback there?
That site plan's not with the changes though. That site plan has all the buildings. Being at the same line, which they aren't.
About thirty feet.
No.
Give it like the our setback or the this.
So they're, they're showing ten feet there, essentially. Did you want to keep going, Jared?
Uh, I mean, I guess if we're on the comments of the fencing, uh, as somebody who lives. In residences, uh, similar to these, very nearby, that has fences on the street like so. I would most assuredly not like to have a lack of fence. I think those fences help create that space and help frame out that yard. Uh, so the the openness of it, I just, I fully disagree with that comment.
I think, I think it could be also kind of acknowledged that. If we look at Main Street precedent or downtown precedent in Carbondale. Um, where we have townhomes. I don't know of any that don't have that delineation between the public and private realm. Um, there are also a few dogs in town. And I think about what that does. You know, as far as what it what it opens up, um, for for these folks. Especially if the owner wants to encourage front yard use and not so much in the larger backyards. So I think there's kind of, there's, there's two things for this commission to kind of think about here. Uh, number one, Main Street aesthetic, form, character, uh, how that is consistent. Although West Maine is. Just a baby right now, uh, growing up. One could again conceive that i- in the future, it will be. Um, especially with with the completion of this exciting development, uh, you know. Being on the original approval, uh, group for that, we were very excited for this. Uh, admittedly. Um, so. Um, thinking about the form, the character, but the on one side and then the use, so, um. You know, would would love to hear how you all feel about that. Um, what, you know, I I think there's always a little bit of give and take here. I I appreciate the challenge, um, uh, that the. Kind of the changeover has has caused for both, you know, positive architecture and your client. Um, and at the same time, um, appreciate this opportunity and, you know, you you get it. Not not your first rodeo, right?
From the lack of air, you can tell.
So, um. I I I think that's something that I, we got, would all have a chance to. You know, and again, it's not our personal opinions, like, hey, I like front yard fences. It's looking at town precedent, looking at Main Street. Um, looking at. Carbondale character as far as it's defined in the comp plan inconsistency there, so please remember to kind of approach it with that lens. I'm going to pause there for a second and would love folks to kind of begin to check in on that.
Question about the heights. I think that I read that it was still within our code now that it's gone up.
Three feet up to thirty-five.
Yeah, it just makes me nervous because down here. We have people trying to do that, but, um, overall. I I. I feel like maybe cost was a concern because I hadn't seen this project before, and I think it's so quaint in the original. Configuration and then it feels like a lot of the, uh, design details. That would make it attractive to me, you know, like the covered front porches and the little fences and everything. They went away. It feels a little more institutional now with the changes. I'd love to see some of those components come back and that may not be something that's within the purview and. I'd love to see some of those components come back and that may not be something that's within the purview and. We really do have a precedent for having somebody. Way before you guys change what the, um, finishes were on the buildings and so I really feel like that's important for us to see. What they are, even if it was kind of subtle changes, I'd love to see that board and see what that looks like. I'm excited to have this project. I think that what you guys are doing is fantastic. I just wish a little more of that character could come back.
Yeah, the rendering, um, be it Revit or otherwise is a, is a, is kind of the result is, was unfortunate for this conversation, you know. Um, the, the graphics clearly are, are lacking the pop and the depth, um, which doesn't, you know, it's, it's a tough one. Luckily, there's a lot less architects on this, uh, commission these days, so, um, and one is, is missing, so that would, that helps you guys. Uh, I guess I'll, I'll just kind of speak, you know, some of these things, um, I, I have no problem personally with. Height increase, um, especially because it's, we, we aren't breaking any ceilings. Uh, you know, as far as height limitations there, so I think that's, you know, we, we can't really get into that or it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to get into that. Especially if we're guaranteeing nine foot ceilings for folks on all floors and that, that's, that's, I think, if anything else, again. Where my concerns lie and I, and I do understand, you know. All of our projects these days, we have clients who are trying to fit into the challenges of increasing prices. So we see, you know, window package changes, et cetera, happening. This is Main Street. Right? And, uh, so I, I think. I think this project has held to two things. One, its initial presentation, what it kind of set out for itself. But then two, upholding a certain standard to continue, uh, equality, uh, you know, environment along Main Street. Even though it is on the west side of, of one thirty three. So when I see, you know, lintels getting smaller and kind of falling apart and like the frame, you know, the, how we are seeing windows, windows. The window package getting smaller in itself, a little less diversity, um, in that package happening. And I, I think, I appreciate the articulation, uh, for sure. And that, you know, more of the breakup with the modules to a degree, but I think something is lost as well with some of the facade materials. As well as with, with the windows, so, you know, that again, I'm just kind of just, just saying that out to this commission to see, you know, how we, we all feel about it. Just, just being real. The one for me, however, that is, is really tough is that front fence. Um, and, and again, I've already kind of voiced those, those thoughts on that, but. The delineation between public and private realm on Main Street, I mean, as it was, I felt that that fence originally was even a little bit. Too wimpy, uh, for a Main Street condition, um, you know, knowing what we have in other areas of town. Uh, getting into a little bit more than even like a kind of a metal, um, so removing it entirely to me is, um. Is really tough to see.
Do you recall or could you tell us what the original fence material was that was offered? Yeah, it wasn't, I couldn't tell what the material was and I didn't.
Or aluminum? I don't think we're doing a whole lot of wrought iron in twenty twenty four. Sure would be cool. Well, we'll have China ship, ship them over right away. So, um, yeah, I mean, but on the flip side, I appreciate the additional privacy in the backyard. What I, I'm almost afraid to ask is, is that going to be maintained as a, as a wood or a metal product? Uh, we, we don't allow PVC or plastic fences, do we? I'm, I'm, I'm forgetting.
I, I don't know if we specify, uh. I think quality materials. The smarter ends of the planning team this way.
Jared, does it have to be non-combustible if it's attached to the structure?
There might be some building code issues with that, but, um, not from a land use and planning side. Quality materials, so if you can tell me that plastic is quality, then we, we could get there.
In my, we, we know what our son can do to a plastic product, um, so I think we know that. So, and, and again, gentlemen, you know, the bar was set high by POSA Architecture in the first place, so. You guys will do something great and so we're, we're, we're happy to work with you here. Um, we're just talking through it and being very, very open and honest about it, so. So would love to know material, what is, did you know the material on that rear, rear fence? Is it, is it a wood fence? Is it a? Okay. So with that, I, I mean, I actually appreciate the added privacy. I thought that was a, a nice touch. Um, it is right next to a parking lot, so, um, and I actually think. Probably, you know, other than what Bristol wants, I, I think there's probably going to be some folks who hang out back there, um, and have a nice barbecue on occasion. Um, so the privacy is going to be really nice. How do folks feel about the Main Street experience?
I'm a little disappointed in the detail changes. Um, the height doesn't bother me changing, that's fine. I like that the buildings are staggered. I think that's a nice touch. Um, I'd be fine if you didn't put window boxes in. But. Some of the things that in older parts of Carbondale Main Street. That make me enjoy downtown Carbondale, um, is the variation in buildings. And the fact that, you know. A hundred forty years ago, we did put details above windows and parapets and, um. Some of that is missing in the new one and that makes me go home. Um, because when I looked at the packet, I was like, oh, this building is really cool. And then I was like, oh, that's the old building.
Well, it is a hundred and forty years ago. We are here now, so we're, we're not.
But I, I see a lot of value engineering, unfortunately, when I look at it. And, uh. There's, I think, some charm that's lost, um, that I would hope we would continue to bring to buildings on Main Street. I think there on the other side of Main Street, some of the newer, and I mean in the last twenty years, newer, uh, buildings do have detail. And I would hate to go to the other way on this side of Carbondale Main Street. You know, so that it felt like a continuation. I think that's. And I'm not an architect, so I can't help you on terms, but that's, that's my general feel of it, that, um. There are changes I agree with, um, but losing the details, I think, are some of the things that make Carbondale's Main Street special.
And I think special is one thing that, you know, we're, that's might be a little bit of a fuzzy term for us beyond our purview. I think, I think there's a, a quality piece. Uh, I think it's a little bit more tangible.
Yeah, I mean, because if, when you look at them side by side, um. Uh, my background is from the money side. Yeah, but, um, no, so I, I, I see a much simpler form. And. I would hope that Main Street. You know, deserves something a little showy. Because it is a mixed use area. Now, I mean, does that, is that reflected in the comprehensive plan? I don't know.
Jared, were you?
Yeah, I just, I kind of want to make just a, a blanket statement of the changes. Um, I do find the height increase, the massing differences, the. Materiality changes, the window changes, I find those all to be compliant with, you know, what we're kind of seeing. There is character lost in the removal of the fence and the covers. The exposed roof slope, uh, from the back entry and I don't know if this is just a elevation. Miss here, but there's no exterior lighting being shown on these elevations, so I would very much hope that those fixtures did not change in their spec as well. Uh, that front facade, that main street facade, the north. That's where we want to have our character and it took a lot away from that character. Um, so that's where I think the improvements need to be more so just studied.
If this commission were to, you know, do its best to work with the applicant here. Knowing that everyone's trying to do their best, there, there have been some challenges on, on all sides of things. Something that comes up for me is what is, what is more, you know, we think about. There is kind of the, the, the front face or the front facade that, that faces south to Main Street and there are some changes in the, in the backyards, which. Uh, in all honesty, will just affect the residents. The most, I mean, well. Do we want to, you know, talk about? In, I guess, let's go out on a limb and I'll, I'll kind of stick my neck out. Those covered porches, although they made, they, they're the covered rear egress points make sense on some level and it's. Not the end of the world in my mind. Um, clearly they're, they're having to save some costs, deal with cost increases. Not to mention long-term maintenance on, on something like, like those elements. I think improvements were made to the sheds, positive improvements, I think, uh, improvements were made to the rear, uh, fences. For improved privacy. Um, so I think as far as the rear yards go, I could almost be convinced that it's been kind of a wash. I also appreciate the added addition of solar and, and some of the, what will be improved in the long run, kind of a, you know, get away from the flat roofs. Does anybody have any major problems with this rear besides those covered, um, egress points, rear doors?
Uh, no, that's something I'm. Sorry, that's something I'm willing to, you know, put on the back burner. I think the Main Street facade is, sorry, thank you for the correction, by the way, the south. I think that's the, the only area where I'm finding a lot of, um, departure from what was originally proposed and I think. The north elevation, I'm totally fine with how those have developed and the realistic nature of. A sloped roof is actually very, very nice.
Yeah, um, I think, uh, I appreciate you bringing up the lighting. Um, I hadn't caught that, so thanks, Jared, for that. Um, probably a good note to think about, um, furthering kind of that Main Street component. Um, because I, I don't remember where, how light poles are kind of, that will play into this. So. Mm-hmm, please.
Um, I concur basically with Nicholas and Jared and I'd love to see those. Back covered pieces stay if at all possible for, but, but if we need to let those go to get that. Main Street facade, um, back to where it was, I, I think I, I, I agree that, you know. The back isn't as important as the Main Street for sure. I'd be concerned, I know it's probably less expensive to have those, whether you want to call them, uh, lintels or headers. Um, without the detail, but I think the detail really helps that homage to what we have going on in the rest of Main Street. Because I was really, it's the same, new, new to me, uh, knew about the site plan, I didn't see the elevations and I really was. Excited about the approved and then was like, oh no. So, yeah, um, yeah, how do we work with you? I think it, it was exciting to me that POSA was on this and. The level of detail POSA brings to projects and, um, like the storage shed is great to see that's there and, uh. Uh, the PV add wonderful as well as the, the slope proof, so. Yeah, how do we help you get to the final permit here?
So, and, and, and maybe, you know, what we're seeing here again is just a kind of a graphic change. So maybe you can kind of help identify that if, you know. Is it just a matter of, is, is it a color, is it a material or is it just kind of a VE exercise on? Those lintels that are, you know, causing, I think, some of the consternation around. The detail.
Nicholas, can I, um, just mention something that I'd be interested in hearing?
Why don't we let this happen first?
Sure.
Excuse me, here on the right is the approved materials. This is for the entire project, not just for these buildings, so you'll see a lot more materials. Than what was presented, but you can kind of see, you've got the brick veneer here. Um, and you have kind of similar brick veneers in what was. Uh, what was approved. Um, you have stained horizontal wood siding, stained and painted horizontal wood siding. Um, vertical board and batten siding and on the second page, you've got some, uh, vertical board and batten siding as well and so. Um, yeah, the EFS is there as well, metal cladding. You know, I, I think a lot of the materials are similar, um, if not identical to what was kind of approved. I think the major changes, um. You know, probably are in more of those architectural details, um, with. With the, I, I don't know exactly which one you said it, but kind of the, the diversity of the colors. And the diversity of the windows and the treatments as far as headers, lentils, sills, all that. Um, that kind of created that built overtime feel, which was that original design concept that was being presented. Um, so, you know, I, I looked at this and I didn't really have any concerns about the materiality necessarily. Being less than what was originally discussed.
Great. Thanks, Jared, for that. What's that?
Venturing off from this one. I like flush.
Um, well, aside from personal opinions. Let's begin to bring this one in for a landing, folks. Um, so. Jared, how do you, how would you like us to, uh, resolve this as far as before we, I mean, we, we can. Clearly just move into a.
So, so I think there's kind of two things. Um, what I heard from height, bulk, mass, roof change, no issues there. The concerns are really the quality of the, um. The, the Main Street elevation, so I think there's two options. Um, one could be continue the public hearing. Ask the applicant to come back with revised Main Street elevations. Um, the other would be to. You know, direct staff to work with, um, the applicant and address the kind of quality. And then we could bring that back to this board if we feel that, um, there's still a, uh. Some sort of deviation from what was originally approved. Um, the simplest would be kind of return to that level of detail, um, that was originally approved, approved for that Main Street elevation. I don't know how feasible that is for the architecture team, um, but you know, I think those are kind of really two options. For you guys, you could say we approve the, um, height changes, roof changes. Bulk mass changes, but we don't approve that Main Street elevation design change and that could be kind of an outcome of tonight. Or you could ask to see it again and continue the public hearing.
Um, I'm gonna go out on a limb here, I'm gonna look at all of you and shake your head to disagree with me. But I, I think I would continue to say that I'm comfortable with staff being the kind of the thoroughfare for you, kind of the. The gatekeeper is a better word, about that, more power, uh, for kind of, so we can kind of be clear about that. Um, rather than having to come back and do this whole thing, um, and miss Thursday night football again. So, sorry, just trying to lighten the mood. As far as. Uh so I think the backyard, we've all, we've kind of cleared that one out. Um so. We can kind of put that one to bed. Front fences, lighting. And I think just material color makeup, those are, those seem to be the three things that we're down to at this point. Yes. Great. And and yeah, and there was never any kind of light poles or anything like that detached that was proposed, so I don't I don't think we're gonna have any problems there. Um so that's an easy check that one off. So um. These is with the front fence or public private delineation and then um. I think what's probably the biggest sticky point for, as I'm I'm hearing it. Um is the kind of the the level of quality or level of finish on the facade. Is there anyone who is okay with there not being fences in the front yard, that that delineation, public, private?
Um Nick, I think one project that I can think of is uh South Third Street where they don't have a fence. And I believe that's the Ryan Fork School District project um for the teacher affordable housing. Where they kind of provided that buffer um through landscaping um without the the fences. And I know, uh I think it's the Crayola Town Homes on the other side of Main Street on Colorado Ave. Um that also have fences, so two kind of projects to um maybe consider and look at as far as fence or no fence. To provide that um separation.
Well, yeah, I think we're asked for, is there anyone who's okay with no fence otherwise? It it sounds like everybody wants that delineation from what I've gathered. Um and I and on Main Street. Because I I think the student, the the teacher houses don't actually face main, they face inwardly uh to the parking courtyards.
Uh no, there is um one side on South Third Street that does face Third Street and the public does walk along the sidewalk to get to Third Street Center. So I would be okay with no fence if that separation was able to be made. If if cost is something that's kind of what the project is getting hung up on for that fence.
So one, okay with no fence, anybody else okay with non fenced?
I like that project and I agree with what you're saying, but I think there's also a safety issue on Main Street. I just like the idea of the fences to contain whatever is going on. Because that's quite a thoroughfare, so I'm fence.
I'm one. Fence or no fence?
I feel fence. I I think it'd be better, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna go fence as well, Candace, so I I think pretty clear on that delineation. And then lastly, the elephant in the room, which this is kind of amorphous uh with which is just that that character. I I don't know how we uh. Oh, look at that. Good eye, Jared. Is there anybody who has a problem with the window package? I it to me, that again is an under understanding on VE. Um and then there, like Kylie said, there were some interior changes that kind of called for that, so that is understanding as well or understandable. So I I don't need to go there unless anybody else does.
No, I'm good with the window package.
Well, my my job is to work on the interior, so um. I don't see a problem with the original windows, but I suspected that had to do with cost. I love the original windows. And I think it completely changes the look with what's going on in the first floor windows. Later, and I think it's gonna be hard to get that character piece to look right. With just that one small square window, but I'm not quite sure what to do because.
Oh, you're on building um F?
Yeah, I'm on F.
No, she's not.
I'm on the front. But. If the money isn't there. What do you do? Like, I like the original windows.
I think it's also cove too, like.
Yeah, the the northeast elevation, the first page is the rear.
They were looking at the south.
Anyway, I like the original windows. But but I understand if if there's some reason that that can't happen. I just think we need the overall character piece. Back some way.
Okay, so how about this? Rather than micromanage too much, um which is not the point of this commission or our job. We will, we've kind of, I I think, drawn one line in the sand with uh the with the front fence. Um that in that public private delineation. Um Jared, I think you've kind of heard that there is a request for. Maintaining Main Street quality and character. And. Rather than get into the details of of how it's lost um and what's possible, not not wanting to get into the interiors. Um and knowing that there has been some push because of that, and that's understandable. Maybe we push it back on you and staff um to kind of figure out um acknowledging backyards. We get front yards and now as far as that front facade or that Main Street experience goes. Is that fair? Is is that, I'm sorry, did I capture?
I just have one comment, as much as I like the original um the way the blue doors are and the red doors are. I understood from a interior standpoint why you did the change of the locations of windows and doors. So from the look. I then understand the windows looked better, but that would be my comment is definitely make sure that interior is functioning, because that was a good change.
Interiors are not our purview.
I know that, but I understood why they did it from the exterior. So, but I still think a little bit of character brought back will balance that out.
So how can we close this up for you, Jared? Move on.
Accepting the design changes. Prove the design changes with the exception of a requirement for the front fence. And addressing the main street quality and character consistent with the. Originally approved plans.
Who's feeling bold this evening and articulate?
Feeling bold, not so much articulate, but I'll give it a shot.
I I I do, um you know, that that's working with staff, you know, and we can talk internally about. Permit processing, that's completely out of this group's purview, but we we can discuss that internally. Yeah.
Thanks for checking it out, man.
Let's give this a try, huh? Motion to approve the proposed changes to uh Carbondale Marketplace. Uh Buildings F and G uh with the exception of the south. Face fencing to be reviewed and approved by staff to be maintained in character. With Carbondale and the comp plan. Does that suffice? Right, we're only doing fence, right?
No, and and facade characters.
Oh, okay, I thought we were just doing fence, so let me re-strike that. Okay, sorry. Okay, and so the front facade is to be.
Reviewed with staff.
Reviewed with staff to maintain character. Okay, great. Okay, uh motion to approve the proposed changes to Carbondale Marketplaces. Buildings F and G with the exception of the south facade. And fence to be reviewed to uh fall within character of the Carbondale Comp Plan and the Town of Carbondale.
And a second. Kim seconds. Approve. Yes, I I. Okay, the eyes have it. Sound good. Got it, Jared? Great, gentlemen, thank you. Appreciate it. And and truly an exciting project, so we're excited to see it continue. Staking out West Main for office. As a quick side question. Those site triangle um challenging uh transformer boxes. Will those be moved, changed? At at one point when when the Johns were still here. There was the realization that those are technically in violation of site triangle limits. And they were going to change, but we know that's it's no small fee to do that. But it kind of has to. What is the status of those? Yes. It's it's in right away.
So those were in, those were installed uh prior to this development and preceded this development and this development. Did not install those and so um. Yeah, the the this development isn't proposing to move those, that's gonna be a a town. Discussion. I believe one of our trustees has discussed that with the budget about potentially allocating some funds to. Um addressing. As he calls them, the green monsters.
Sounds like a job for. A petty cash kind of thing. Okay, guys, thanks again. Appreciate it. Yep, best of luck with the continues of the project.
Cam, hoping you make me sound a lot more intelligent in my.
Replace all words with different ones, Jared.
I like, I like throwing a salad of sentences together, you know, seeing what sticks.
All right. Moving forward. Well, and I just want to thank all of you for, again, a thoughtful discussion and. And we and we will continue to kind of like, you know, it was always challenges to be a little bit more concise the best we can. I know we all have really thoughtful opinions and it's not always so easy. I know I I'm guilty of that myself. Let's get into our conversation and a little tidbit, we are running a little a little late here, so we're gonna try to keep this a-again. Um we're gonna keep this tight. So uh we are meeting with the um the Board of Trustees on Tuesday. What time is that happening, Jared? Six P M.
I'll send calendar invites to you all.
Can you give us a a a brief intro on what to expect, how what what decorum looks like, et cetera?
Yeah, so it's a work session, so it's a little bit more informal back and forth. But um the trustees will have to call the meeting to order. Um currently, the agenda, this is the only agenda item. So you guys kind of have. The full allotment of time with the Board of Trustees. Um I think they've set aside about an hour for it. Um if it goes a little bit longer, because it's a fruitful discussion, so be it. But um essentially, the the trustees will uh, you know, look to the. To the Planning and Zoning Commission to kind of update them on anything, so we've always prepared a little bit of a staff memo. To kind of help guide the discussion. Um we always list accomplishments, approvals, kind of the larger items. And then um. Work into kind of some of the discussion topics, and so that's a little free form. Sometimes the trustees will have a uh. Pet project they want to discuss. Sometimes it will be a little more P and Z. What do you guys want to discuss? That just kind of. Goes each time, but we've included on in the staff memo kind of five items. That I think we discussed at the last meeting um that were worthy of conversations. So really, it's just the topic. The trustees could look to you guys to say, what are your thoughts on these? Or they could say, well, we have concerns with such and such, and then just kind of begin a back and forth conversation.
Quick question on that. Do they call us up to the hot seat or just?
Yeah, you guys will kind of all be sitting in and around.
It it is, it is informal, just to kind of give a a little bit of like first person ex- like experience of it. I'm having done it for five or six years, you you know, we'll we'll sit up here and it isn't gonna be like a hey, crack a beer and hang out and chat. Um there still is, I I think a standard of decorum as far as kind of a kind of concise communication. Um but it but it is, you know, is um it is a work session, so. Uh I and and. Beyond that, I I think, Jared, yeah, I mean, it's, there's is a little bit of, we'll see, this is a new group of trustees. Different flavor, I mean, there's there's always a different flavor uh to just new trustee groups, so we'll see how they take it, how they choose to take it. I guess my question regarding the five items here is. Do we participate anecdotal discussions or, you know, are we should be parking improvements, just to, your requirement is just like the top dog here. Any whiff of how that might go? I mean, that that's that's quite the.
Yeah, I I think it's, you know, I I kind of view this a little bit as. Are there specific items that you guys want clarification in within that? You know, the trustees have expressed concern about the town's current parking requirements.
As in too stringent, too too uh too high of a requirement.
Potentially have requiring too much in certain areas. So I think a a little bit of that would be um, you know, maybe. Gauging what their concerns are or expressing what your guys' concerns are. I think in addition um on parking as one, are there other pieces of information? Or tools that would help you guys address parking regulations? For example, um one thing that we brought up in a a previous conversation with the trustees is. Would a um existing parking usage analysis be helpful? Would a survey of other parking uh requirements in other similar jurisdictions be helpful? Would having a third party co- code consultant be helpful? Some of the issues that you guys kind of dealt with with the um affordable housing requirements and increasing those. How do you guys? Help the trustees kind of achieve their goals while having thoughtful conversations about the regulations. Yet having the tools you need to have those thoughtful conversations. So, you know, in parking for one, if you say, sure, we're happy to to tackle that, but. You know, we really need the trustees to allocate funds for these types of studies so that we have the information we need or. These types of consultants, I think that's great feedback to give them. Um or clarification, are we talking parking as a whole? Are we talking about parking for residential, single family? Are we talking about parking in the downtown core? Um you know, some of those, a a lot of that has. Different scopes of review. So I think. Getting some clarification there would be helpful.
And I think, you know, knowing Ben, I I imagine that he will give us a nice lead in for each of these. You know, he will uh guide us through this, so I I would encourage us all to be great listeners, as we always are, you know, as as commissioners. For the introduction of each of these, I I would expect that Ben and or if if someone, I don't know, if he will introduce each of them or maybe he'll he'll. He will pass them off to different trustees based on personal passions. Who knows? But likely there will be some good context set out for us. You know, and I think in general, you know, when I look at these, I'm sure we all have opinions on them. Rather, whether we've been on the mission long or not, um but as far as to to kind of just to give a timely example. Affordable housing. You know, even with all, you know, Jared and staff's hard work, sorry, Jared, Ellie Ellie's hard work on that. You know, I think we 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 kind of muddled our way through, but at the even at the end of that, this commission was like. None of us are affordable housing professionals or deeply experienced in that. And so I I think what we came to was. None of us are affordable housing professionals or deeply experienced in that. And so I think what we came to was. Yeah, we would, you know, we would be able to weigh in if there was something tangible or objective to reflect. Or use a tool as you just referred to it. So I think that's a, that's a great example in the kind of the recent history. Of our ability to do our jobs here. And I don't know, is anyone here a mountain town parking professional? You know, I've actually worked with them in the past. I know some fantastic ones and there is a science that is beyond. My knowledge or ability, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, it, like everything, it's complicated these days. And I think that's probably a good, good kind of consideration in this. So parking requirements is one, building setbacks on one thirty-three. This could be as simple as the interesting math. Thank you for including that in here. Just kind of, kind of cleaning that up and seeing what the, what the trustees think about that. Are they trying to? You know, change the landscape minimum or the, or the building setback numbers. I think just some identification there will help that. Jared, is this an opportunity to, I mean, I think those of you who've been around long enough know my own kind of questions around one thirty-three. I think a few others of us here have some as well. Setbacks are one thing, but I think there's just the big question of one thirty-three in general. Wasn't there, was there a recent discussion about that at the trustee level? Did I hear something about that? Maybe I'm making things up.
You know, I, I think with some of the recent land use applications, there were some philosophical questions brought up. But I don't remember any dives into specific highway one thirty-three design character. Outside of the map Carbondale conversation.
You've kind of lit the fuse on that, I guess, in some ways.
Right? So, so this was really, it's been brought up by this group when reviewing the recent application. The trustees also kind of. Discussed it and, you know, had the same realization that you had that maybe there's a issue in the code. So, you know, I kind of look at this and say. What's, what's the goal? Is it to generally keep buildings at that ten foot setback? Is it to provide some relief towards the road, away from the road? You know, and so I think with that one, it's really, what's the goal of kind of the outcome? What, what's the intent of what you're trying to do with development so that you guys at least have some direction? And staff has some direction to help prepare. Potential amendments to address kind of the goals of the community and desires of the community.
Yeah.
So I think this is probably a smaller conversation than parking. But, you know, I do think it kind of leads into the third one, which is clarification and direction. I know with, with housing. The P and Z kind of got direction of increase the regulations to twenty-five percent. And then as you guys worked through it. You met again. With the, the trustees later in the process to ask for some additional clarification, direction about cascading the regulations. About was the directive really twenty-five percent or was it? More amorphous than that. And so, you know, I kind of view that third one, and maybe that's the first one is how can at these. Work sessions or when the trustees kind of initiate land use changes. How can they assist staff in the P and Z with providing more clarification and direction upon what they're looking for? So that you guys know, is this a update the code and we want to see it in a month? Or? Consider these regulations for a while and come back with something a bit more thoughtful.
Number four, I, I think, you know, talk about this, there's, there's been a lot of change to this process over the years. When. My gosh, I'm the.
You can throw me under the bus.
It's funny with, without Nick or. Jeff here, I become the oldest person on this board or this commission. It was very different. And in seeing the last couple of rounds, what I've noticed is that the trustees aren't showing up with questions. It almost seems like they, it came back to them. So it used to be during the day thing. We would come in kind of before sessions started. So you'd come in either between like five and six. And you would come in and be closed door session, not televised to the world or zoomed out. And it would be a thirty minute conversation per, per person. And then it would be the, 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 the commission would then make a series of recommendations. Just kind of order of operations and send it up. And sometimes it was taken, sometimes it was changed. It was all good. But that was, it was kind of a, a more engaged kind of process that included this commission. It's now changed quite a bit from that. And so I think it's a great opportunity. Seeing how the last one specifically went where they just, they didn't even have any questions. So it's an opportunity to kind of just check in with them to see if something that we can kind of take off their plate and handle internally again. See how that goes.
Hey Nicholas.
Yeah.
I was asking Lauren about this. And she, if I understand correctly, she or someone was reviewing the procedures. Because in like Preservation Commission, it still is that way.
Yeah.
The commission talks to the, all of the candidates and then makes a recommendation to Board of Trustees. And if I understand correctly, she said the way that it's written in our bylaws, whatever it is. Says that we have been doing it wrong, that it's supposed to go right to Board of Trustees. So it sounds like we need some legislation if we want that to change.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah. So what, you are correct in all of that. Janet Buck had basically been doing it. The way. With the consent of past trustees, that all the other commissions did it. And when somebody got on board.
You're welcome.
It was funny because it was like, you know, because I think I was re-upping at that point.
Yeah.
And it was like jarring. As unemotional as I am. Just took it on the chin. So I, a good opportunity to clarify that, see if it's something that, because the, the difference being that we are quasi judicial. And that is, that is where it kind of breaks. I mean, is that the decisions that we make, example A, tonight. It affects real people, real projects, real money, this community in a way. Not to speak, you know, any, any less of any of the other commissions, all very, very helpful in their own right. There's just a little bit more like legal implication behind what this commission says and kind of decides. So. A good conversation to see where that lands. Anything else touching on that with that, Jared?
No, you know, I think it's really, it's not any person or any appointment. I want to make sure that's abundantly clear. It's really having observed the last couple. Processes, there was really just a lack of questions being asked by the trustees. That could help them make informed decisions about who they want to appoint. Every single person could have been appointed just like they were. It's just, I think it's that process of, of really making sure that the people you're appointing. You know, have the desire, ability and diversity of inputs. To make this a really high functioning group. And, you know, I think it's really just, if you, if you don't have time. Board of Trustees, can the P and Z do more with the questions, do more with the interviews? To give you guys some information to, to make that kind of quicker decision. And so I think that's kind of part of what we're asking, similar to how other commissions. Provide that process. So.
At the end of the day, we aren't trying to, I mean, we still expect that the trustees would have the final call. That, that would not change. And nor is, is that, it's just.
Yes, that's my question. Is it possible to ask for an informal session before their session? That would still fall in legality?
Well, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I know. That's why.
That could be one of the outcomes.
One of the outcomes. Yeah, I think there's, there's a discussion could enter all kinds of stuff.
Is it actually legal to have an, like informal closed door session with candidates? Or does that have to be a public meeting?
I, I think we'd, we'd have to look into that a little bit, but I don't think there's anything illegal about having a non-binding interview. Whether that's public or not public, but having that kind of process before that minutes are provided.
Yeah, I mean, I could see a, a.
The appointment.
Almost like a two-step interview process. I, I. Was not aware of the previous like closed door, non. Public interviews in the past.
Well, it wasn't, wasn't public. It was, we didn't have Zoom back then.
Okay. So you had to be here in the room to.
Yeah, like, like people could sit in and if they chose to, but you couldn't, there was not, the applicants weren't all here together. We were, the applicants were outside and other people could sit in and watch, but.
Which, which makes sense because I, I know in some of the interviews I did, applicants all got the same questions. But we were all in the same room, seeing how the other applicants. Answered, which was like weird. So I get that part.
Yeah, and I, I think even like Jess Rubeson got the, got the short end of the stick. I mean, I was actually, I called her out during that interview. For something that was taken, it was my bad out of context. And it actually created a closer friendship because of it. But I think there are ways to, I think, polish up the process, a little bit of the old, a little bit of the new in a way that. When I sat in that chair six years ago and I got grilled for a half an hour. Michael Durant was the man up here at that point. And I think he raised his voice at me at one point. For questioning the biblical nature of our U D C.
I think he yelled at you in my interview too.
Yeah, I don't mind being yelled at. So, you know, it was what, but what I will say positively about that is that. I think coming onto this commission felt a little bit. More like an honor on some level. You know, it, it was a level of seriousness. It was a level of question that made me sweat a little bit. It was a thoughtfulness that I, I knew I was coming into a group that was going to be here and was going to kind of work together. You know, we, we've had an interesting run the last few years with COVID and everything else. We've had some challenges with attendance and, you know, some people like to show up in their campers on Zoom. On occasion. Some people are, geez, it's so rare. Sorry, Kim. No, in, in all seriousness, I, I think it was actually a really great thing for camaraderie and kind of connection with this commission. So, because we, we do have to have some pretty serious conversations and find out how we all work together and how we all communicate. So I think there was a value there that's, it's. That's been lost because just because of the process or it could be just, just harnessed and improved on. So. Didn't mean to kind of go over there with too, too much over that one, but it just, for me, it's, it's been so much change. U D C amendments. Let's close it out in the big dog there, ADUs and landscape.
Yeah, so these are two that have been kind of surfaced through not only this board, the trustees. And Historic Preservation Commission. How do we kind of review A D U regulations to maybe expand? What an A D U can be. And then the, the second one, landscape regulations, the state has actually. Passed some recent legislation that outlaws non-functional turf grass. Simple examples are turf grass in medians of roadways. Grass strips between sidewalks and roadways.
Back up the act too?
A, a lot of stuff like that. And, and I think, I'm pretty sure, but it's some pretty big legislation where we cannot require it. We cannot build it. We cannot maintain it. And so those regulations take effect, I believe. Started twenty twenty-six, if I'm not mistaken. Came up in our A P A. I think it's twenty twenty-six. I think you have twenty twenty-five to adjust your regulations. So. It's, it's something that we'll have to address sooner rather than later. And so I think kind of within all of these. I just wanted to kind of throw out some of these other bigger items that might be coming down the pike. And maybe help this group and the Board of Trustees prioritize, especially knowing in some of these conversations. Could be pretty big and meaty and like the affordable housing, take close to a year to address. And so, you know, being respectful of everyone's time, effort. How can this group and that group have a conversation saying, hey, A D U regulations are nice? A quick and dirty on the landscape regulations to make sure that we comply with state law is important. And parking's a little higher or a little lower than A D U. You know, I don't know where that's all going to come out, but I think. Prioritizing some of these would be very helpful.
So as a recommendation. For those of you who haven't cracked your U D C Bible recently or gotten into your comp plans. Probably be good to brush up prior to the conversation. Because this group is the knowledge body on a lot of this. So. Some light weekend reading is suggested on these topics.
And I'll expect to know exactly what's on page two hundred and thirty-seven.
Absolutely.
I don't know, but.
Absolutely not. High quality, high quality materials. Do you know many codes I've written and use that exact line? In design guidelines.
It is off-street parking.
But, but, but I think conceptually too, it's, you know, for example, not disagree with the, the lack of turf grass. In, say, in, in kind of a detached sidewalk condition, but the question that would come up next for me is, okay, fine, what else goes there? Right? Like, because if we're talking about putting a pile of rocks in there with rock mulch, then do we open ourselves up to, you know, weed? Problems, invasive weed species or other things. So it isn't that there's a right or wrong, but I think it's, it's having that conversation and getting clarifications. Really, I think what Jared was making point on earlier, so that we can walk out of that meeting well informed. You know, or, or at least asking better questions back. Jesse?
All right, Jared, just to clarify, that landscape requirement change in the legislation, is that different than the? Wildland Urban Interface Code that's coming down the pipe in twenty twenty-five?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's the Wildland Urban Interface?
The Wildland Inter, Urban Interface Code is, I believe, through legislator, legislative process. Set to take effect July twenty twenty-five through the state of Colorado. And it's. And Jared, feel free to jump in, but to my understanding, it's through the state of Colorado. And still depending on who enforces that code for things like non-combustible fences attached to residences. Or just properties in general, providing that buffer zone to create defensible space between the structure itself and vegetation. But I don't, I don't know if the town is having that conversation.
We, we aren't, we haven't been at least. You know, I don't, I haven't dug into it too much, but I know generally that. The, the landscape regulations that I was talking about was more of a water conservation measure by the state. But, you know, I think between, between both of those, it's kind of two state legislations. That might have impacts to some of our U D C that's worth us digging into a little bit more.
No doubt the Louisville fire was part of the reason. They're one of my biggest clients and so we're still cleaning that up.
Jared, when we did the, the advisement regarding the employee housing, affordable housing. We came, the survey that we thought might be, you know, helpful to evaluate like commercial buildings and how much. They actually have rental pool. What is that called? That survey that you can, we can have done. And I didn't know that this is relative to this meeting or this is something we might want to bring up. Because that was something in that letter to the trustees that we, in our recommendation of affordable housing, kind of said, we need help with this.
It was, it was, there was two things. One was wanting a consultant to kind of better help run pro formas. And the other I thought was. Helping HOAs of affordable housing units. Through requiring things like capital reserve studies at the time of development to assist those HOAs with. to assist those HOAs with creating those, what you're talking about.
Now, there's there's a way to that you can have a survey team come in and help. Maybe a city market would have to buy in to some of the units that are renting out next door based on planning and zoning that those should be employee housing units for employees of city market. You called it something and I can't remember. I didn't write it down. I'm terrible when I write things down. No, you said it. Yeah, you said it was.
Uh, you have to go look back at it.
Yeah, well, that was just something I, you know, as we keep going with the affordable housing, and if that's not part of this work session.
No, commercial linkage is just a different way of looking at it, saying, commercial developments have to um have to provide employee housing based on the employee generation that they do. And it is something that the trustees were um split on. Some were very intrigued by it, um, but they all acknowledged that if we were to pursue something like that, it would take third-party expertise because there's a lot of data that goes into saying a city market produces this many employees versus a lumberyard produces this many and and having those rates and how it works in Carbondale relating to households and units. So um, that would, they they did acknowledge that that would be a a much larger effort if they wanted to pursue that.
So how does that relate to the discussion topics? Can that be something for another day? Is it something that us as P and Z want to address? Because to me, that is one of our biggest problems in our town.
You could, you could definitely put it on if you say, hey, this is actually a higher priority than a lot of these other things. We want to pursue that. Um, I think the trustees thought generally was, yeah, but let's see how these regulations go first um before maybe increasing requirements again and adding this commercial linkage component.
We might want to walk before we run. We've got a lot of big dogs.
And I just want to make sure we don't forget that because I do think it's an important piece that we're missing from a zoning standpoint in our future of, you know, making sure you you know, we, city market has rentals for city market.
What's that?
Which we don't have.
I think Eagle County has something like that that they do now.
Yeah. Um, thank you for that reminder, Jared.
What did you say?
Uh, we're just checking time. Well, um, so I think we have the the these five, if if there's time, um, we can, we can check into that one as well. Our plate does seem somewhat full this at this point. Anything else quickly bef- on this topic that people have opinions on to discuss before we move into our last item on the agenda for the night? Our last.
I don't have to make a motion for that, right?
Nope.
Think about things.
Yep. Um, okay, uh, last one, Jared, map Carbondale support letter.
So we prepared a a support letter. Um, if you guys would like to forward this, you can direct Nick to sign it. You don't have to. Kay, correct me if I'm
Ask me to sign it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, um, but I don't believe any of the other commissions, E-Board, Park and Rec are forwarding any sort of formal letter. Um, Bike Ped Trails likely will, um, since they were kind of one of the major commissions to to address this. Um, so we just prepared it. If you want to, feel free. We kind of thought this summarized maybe some of the high points that we heard, some of the the concepts that you guys really supported and how it kind of related back to the comp plan. So um, do with it what you want.
So my takeaway was that we were generally, this question was generally positive. There were some really good comments. I heard from Jared that those comments were taken back by the um consultant and um woven in to a T.
Sure.
Plus or minus. I'm I'm open. I I think it's this, I would love to, this resolve itself in a just a vote. If not, um, unless anybody, we could just go the other way. Does anybody have any feelings about not recommending staff's map Carbondale effort into this town's effort on this? Any concerns? Any concerns? I think I think we would be glad to support the effort and grateful for the work that was done. Again, I think it was a a good effort, let's um say that.
Awesome. Yeah, we'll get this printed up and ready for Nick's Herbie Hancock.
Great.
You read a great proxy letter.
What's that?
You read a great proxy.
Chat GPT, baby. Do we need to close this portion of the meeting? Uh, now we just move on. Okay, uh, staff update.
Take one and pass along. Um, so real briefly, um, Carbondale Aquatic Center. Um, just want to update you guys on this.
Jared, I'm going to interrupt you real quick. This better be good. My uh kids love inspecting this place.
Nice.
Go to site weekly.
So uh, essentially, there were some design changes that came down through um value engineering and to make the pool project pencil out. Um, this is an update because the trustees have approved the design changes in their uh comments, but I wanted to keep you guys informed. The second two pages are what you guys approved, what the trustees approved from a design standpoint. Um, there's two options, obviously, with and without the covered roof, glass roof structure, whatever.
Cover's going away?
What's that?
Cover's going away?
No, so there there approved two options and it was basically an ad alternate. Could the town afford to do that? Could the town not? Um, the trustees, Planning and Zoning Commission, all agreed that with the cover is a significantly better building and pushed the entire project to find a way to fund this. But that was what was approved. Um, the trustees reviewed the changes and ultimately approved some design changes, which are the first two pages. The ad alternate still exists with the roof structure. But as you can see, the glass block is the main difference. The glass block went from being an artistic vertical element throughout the elevations of the buildings to essentially a storefront look on here. So the glowing representation is kind of a good glass block creates very much a storefront, what was approved. And this is probably the best representation, page three, of these vertical glass block elements throughout. More of an update to you guys that it changed. So if you see this building built and you're like, huh, that looks a little different than what was at our P and Z packet, and someone goes back, you at least now know what changed and why it changed. So it's really just a staff update for you all.
What about that?
On the approved ones?
Yeah.
So that's still an ad alternate. Yeah, um, from what I've heard, the roof element is on track to be funded as long as we continue the fundraising pace that we're at. So if you know wealthy individuals in and around town, get them to donate to the pool. But yeah, I I believe I I missed uh the most recent budget conversation about the pool, but I believe it's on track to include that element. Um, but that was one of those ad alternates of they may not be able to physically fund that portion of it. It was. Yeah. Go ahead.
Um, so last night at the Park and Rec Commission, Eric updated. So the ad alts have all been approved and are part of the current budget. Um, what they did was they, the, there was a one point six million from the general fund that was earmarked earlier this year. Half of that is going back into the general fund. Um, and they are going to use eight hundred thousand dollars roughly from the uh recreation sales and use tax so that all, because they had to let the contractor know by January if these adults could be included. So the project is funded as designed.
The only change is the glass block amount only being under that roof as opposed to vertically dispersed throughout.
The building in a artistic manner.
That's all right.
So FYI, um, that is, I think, it for staff updates that we have. And thank you, Kay, for the last night update.
Thank you.
Well, that's exciting. It it's been a, I know a long road coming and great to hear that it's nearing something.
You will all be required to be there in your swimmies for the grand opening.
I'll get a new speedo.
Floaties works, whatever.
Can we get like PZ floaties? You know?
I I might, I might just do that.
Yeah.
Let's talk.
Okay. Can't wait for that to be done. All right, folks, um, closing commissioner comments, going once, going twice.
We'll see you next year.
Sold. No, we'll see you next week.
Night, everybody.
See you Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I'll say that then.
Send out that hold there, sir. So we can get folks. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
I have been working with the